Welcome back. You're watching HFO TV, co-sponsored by AMF Capital, the Ball Chanick Law Firm, the Butler Exchange Group, and the construction firm J.R. Johnson.
I want to welcome everyone to our webinar today for the city of Portland candidate, Loretta Smith. As people know, or maybe they don't know, there was a May primary election. I think there was 18 candidates vying for that position number two that was vacant when Nick Fish passed away in January. Loretta and Dan Ryan were the top two contenders. The way it's set up, we'll have a special runoff election, which I believe ballots are getting mailed out today or tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow will be the elections, the 11th?
Yeah.
Okay. To get your ballots in. And then, from what I understand, Loretta, as soon as that election's over, you go right into, you're not waiting till November?
No, no, not at all. They have to, they have to validate the election, and then shortly after that, I go directly into office.
And as the term goes through '21?
Uh, '22.
'22. So it'll be a two-year, gotcha, okay.
About two years and a half, yeah.
Got it. And then everybody, then the other, the other city commissioners that are running for those positions, the ones that are in runoff, or then they take office in January?
They take office in January, yeah. So I'll see them when, when they come.
Gotcha, gotcha. You'll have a few months ahead of them.
Right. You'll lay some groundwork.
Got it, got it, okay. Well, just kind of jump in. I mean, if people want to find out more of kind of your background, where you used to, you know, be with Ron Wyden, kind of starting with him, and then kind of you, I know you were in Metro for a while, you know, they can go to your site, but what's going on now?
Yeah, Multnomah County. Okay, okay, I'll give you a brief background of who I am. I just want to say hi to folks. I don't know who I'm talking to because I see HFO tech, so how many people?
Well, this is going to be an audience of, you know, a lot of it's going to be multifamily investors and owners within the city of Portland.
Okay, okay, great.
Kind of, maybe we thought this would be good to give you a chance, and for them to get a chance to see these candidates since the election, literally two weeks in a row, so.
Right, right. This is, this is a very interesting time now. I'm having interviews in my home throughout the primary, I call it the primary pandemic. We're in, we're in times that I don't think anyone has ever imagined us to be in, from the pandemic of COVID-19, and the protesting, and just all the folks who have been off work for, for weeks and months, not getting unemployment, and those folks who are underemployed. Before the pandemic, my, my platform centered around poverty and making sure that we end widespread poverty. As a staffer for Senator Wyden for 20 years, I started with him at the front desk as a receptionist after I graduated from Oregon State University in Communications. And I learned and earned my way up and around his organization over 21 years. And I ended being his appropriation person, which is putting appropriations in a multi-trillion-dollar budget, that's the federal budget. And working for him, it gave me an opportunity to meet and understand people on the, on the grassroots level, to identify, you know, frontline communities, identifying resources for businesses who do business with maybe the Department of Defense and other places, and also to identify dollars for local government. Having done that, I took my stab at running for elected office for the first time in 2010. I took office from 2011 and was re-elected again in 2014, and I was termed out. But basically, my goal was to, one, build an infrastructure for youth, protect seniors, and help to create jobs. And that's always been my mantra, and that's what I've, I've kind of stuck to a bit. I think that I'm going to have to make sure that, you know, as a small business owner now, since 2018, I started my own business called Dream Big Communications. And it is a, a small team of folks, but we, we work on issues that are important to communities of color, local government, and a little bit of political lobbying. But I know folks like me right now, we're, we're in a crunch, and chasing contracts in the private and public sector is really hard. And I know that 85% of our economy here in Portland is based on small business, and if we don't do a recovery that's going to, that's going to directly impact small business, I don't think that Portland is going to be able to come back. Now that I, I understand paying employer and employee taxes, and what that means, you know, I just wrote the check for, for the city county taxes for the city of Portland. That's really, really important. So I get when payroll taxes are being attacked, that that is going to attack our bottom line. And I think you need someone that has my kind of valuable, rare experience working on the federal level and managing a $2-point-billion-dollar budget at the county, and understanding what these frontline communities are talking about in regards to police reform, police accountability. Because sitting here as a candidate, and as a former elected, and as a mother of a black son, who has experienced many of those things that they're talking about, having the police pull him over when he was 16 in my car, wondering if he had stolen it. And so for me, I'm clear about who I am, I'm not afraid, but I also am pragmatic enough and understand that there is a, a process that you have to go through. And understanding that many of the city commissioners to date, they don't have the kind of local government experience or political experience that I've had. And so I think you need someone with my kind of experience who understands when we do a stimulus package, where the monies, not just where the monies are, but what the uses are for. We were able to carve out a lot of dollars for folks here locally in the 2008, the 2009, and the 2001 stimulus package. I know what that looks like. I know how far to push our congressional delegation. If you don't have any experience with that, it's going to be very difficult to walk in day one and not have that understanding. I don't need a blueprint for the local city of Portland budget. I've followed it for the past 10, 10 years. I don't need a blueprint for the county budget or the state budget. I already have relationships that, that are solid, which helped me to bring in $30 million in my last year for a coalition of color to have, to help kids graduate from high school and to give wraparound support for their families. I know what that is. I know how to go build those relationships, and I still have some of those. But for me, it is really critical that we get the right person in city council right now, that I would be calling if I was sitting there now. I want my city back, right? I look downtown, and it is heartbreaking to see everything all torn up and graffiti. We need to be meeting with those evening protesters on a daily basis, and we need to be at the bargaining table. If we are not doing that, we're not doing our job. Because while we're sitting around waiting for something to happen, waiting for the federal government that I'm so totally disappointed with, that if we're waiting for them to solve our problems, that's not going to happen. There is a lack of leadership down at the city. We need someone who's not afraid, and who's not afraid to talk to the evening protesters so that we can get our city back. I, I'm not going to take a backseat to anybody about, you know, not understanding government and thinking that this is all going to solve itself, because it's not. It's just getting worse. I think every day is a day that, that we lose an opportunity to get on the ground. One, I think one of the issues are, a lot of the evening protesters are mad because this mayor pushed off the conversations around the new police contract. That's number one. They're, they're upset about the federal law enforcement being down on the ground. And so having those two things, that was just a comedy of errors. So what I want to do is hear kind of what you all are interested in, what I can do to be helpful from this vantage point, but I'm very confident in our campaign plan and what we've done to, to win.
So what would be your big difference as to what's happened the last, what's the 50 days now there's been protests? I saw an article editorial in the Portland Tribune talking about lack of leadership from city council to the police, to the police union. I mean, what would you have done differently, you know, I guess hindsight's, what do you see? I mean, you may be in office in August or end of August, how long it takes to certify, I mean, what's, what's that direction?
So here's what I did, here's what I did before the city council passed their budget. I sent them a five-point plan, it was about five pages, but, but they included, or they included qualified immunity, taking 20% off of their $250 million budget and repurposing those resources into the community. The third, which is causing a lot of animosity by the evening protesters, is stopping the chokehold, stop the tear gas, stop the rubber bullets, stop the acoustic devices that, that they use for crowd control. And fourth, and more importantly, to institute a community advisory committee that looks at the excessive force that's put into the manuals of the police department, and to codify that by putting a measure on the ballot for November. And interestingly enough, Commissioner Hardisty is pushing my fifth point by putting a, a ballot measure on so that it doesn't matter who's in, in charge, that we'll have a citizens' review committee. So that depends on today, that depends on who the leadership is, and I think that's a missing point. We don't have a community advisory committee looking at this because this is all blown up in the middle of a pandemic. If we were not, if we were on the right track in the beginning, this would have never happened. And I think the people were waiting for a new police contract so that we can figure out how to reimagine public safety. And, you know, I don't think that I'm that far off base right now to what we can do.
Are you thinking that the majority of the people down protesting were upset about the police contract?
I think, I think that that's what the, let me just say this. I think that Black Lives Matter, this movement is real, and that's how it started, but I think we have people who have co-opted this movement, and I want to be real clear, that these are not the folks from Black Lives Matter. These are not black folks out there doing that. These are folks who have taken advantage of this, of this time and space to argue and fight about that police contract. They were expecting to have a public conversation to talk about that, and then it got moved back six months, and then they finally said it's going to be a year from now. That's just not acceptable. We have too many things at stake right now. We need to gain the confidence of the people who are down on the ground and who are on the front lines. And until we do that, we're not going to be able to solve this. And until we sit down with those folks, because they're the ones who are agitating, they're the ones who are tearing up our downtown.
And what, so in terms of that, what, I mean, are there certain bureaus within the city you would want to be ahead of? I mean, how do you, I mean, that's kind of an interesting thing we've talked about within our city, lack of leadership, of, you know, the system that's set up with the commissioners and people not voted geographically. I mean, do you think, you know, it's time for maybe to change the form of government?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And the reason why I say this is, we have to expand and have voices from every corner of the city. I was first elected as a Multnomah County Commissioner in 2010 from District Two, which is mostly inner north.
Right, because they do districts from Multnomah County, right?
That's right.
Yep.
Had I not been elected from a district for the first time, the first time I ever ran, I won. It's because I knew the people in the community, and I knew what they wanted and what they were asking for from a safety net government. City of Portland, fast forward, they're different. They're, they're, they're about infrastructure, roads, jobs, economy. They have to make sure that they set the tone to be able to have, you know, affordable housing, to be able to do developments, to be able to make sure that those permits are processed. And I'm really upset about the permitting process because it should not take us anywhere between four and six years to develop new housing. If we had $2 billion today, we would not be able to put new housing on our streets in the next year to year and a half because of our, our process, of the pre-development process, the permitting. And you have to go to all these three different agencies to get permitting approved, from the water to the electric, the transportation department. And it's just, I mean, there needs to be a streamlined process. I'm a, a smallplex owner, and if anybody thinks that we're, we're making a lot of money off of the, the rents that we have right now, I could tell them that they're wrong. They're wrong. Mainly, a lot of the smallplex owners like myself, their mom and pop owners, and we don't have six months to a year to be able to let folks stay. We need to, as we're talking about a rent moratorium, and I know that there are people who are rent burdened, we also have to talk about rent forgiveness, mortgage forgiveness, because you can't have one without the other. And so I have a little bit different.
So are you, are you for what, are you for what the state passed with the foreclosure moratorium and the eviction moratorium?
Yes, yes. And, and I'm also for, I'm also for mortgage forgiveness for, for property owners, too. Because.
So then what do you say to the owners that don't have a mortgage that could be, you know, it's not a federally backed mortgage?
We need to, we need, we, we have resources, we have stimulus dollars that are specifically for COVID, COVID-related crisis. And we need to use some of those dollars to help those people who don't have mortgages and who can't, they're living off those dollars. They're, you know, house-rich and cash-poor. So they need to be able to live because they're living off those dollars themselves. And so I have a different mindset than the current city council. I think it's unconscionable, the, the stories that I've heard, that, that there are many business people, property owners, who have tried to talk to a, a few of the, the city councilors, and they won't even meet with them. This is how I am. Look, if we disagree on a policy, if I'm going to create a policy, I'm going to bring you in before I just throw it on the docket and say, let's vote on it. You have to be flexible, you have to have access. I will never deny access to any of my constituents, even if we disagree on a policy. But right now, folks don't have access to our city commissioners. They have basically said it's a timeout to business people and property owners. And that's not the way it should be because we're the ones that are paying the, the business income tax, and we're the ones that, that pay for those homeless services that we see out there. So I just want to, I want to have a balance, a nice balance of, of how to, how to govern at the city level.
And what, so how do you, you know, what is the balance, how do you balance the concern, first, you know, struggling with the pandemic and concern, but then you've got, like you said, property owners that are having issues of, you know, not being able to pay their mortgage?
We have to be fair about those resources. We're going to get a lot more resources coming through. Senator Wyden, I worked for him for 21 years, and there are many folks who disagree with us in our policies, but we never shut our door to anyone. And I do understand what it's like to, to, to be a business person and not being able to make ends meet and put food on the table for your family as well, just as well as it is for a mother who is, who is underpaid, under, underemployed, and who needs some help. I get that. I was, I was that at one time. I raised my son in this community, and I know what it's like to be a single parent. And so I do have that hat as well. But I also understand that in order to make the wheels go in this city, we have to figure out a just and a equitable way for our business people to get back and to get back into their, their own grind. And we're going to have to put some resources behind it, and I, and I have no problem with putting that forward because that's, I mean, that is where we're at right now.
And you, and, and working in that, I mean, is that, that's going to be a pretty big shift from city council from where we've been the last, you know, four, five years?
Well, let me tell you, it's, the, the issue is, I, I've worked with pretty much all of the city councilors, and I've worked with Mayor Wheeler. When I was in Senator Wyden's office, he was the chair of the county board, and then I switched over and became a county commissioner. The problem is Ted doesn't have any help. He doesn't have any backup. So when he backs up, he, he doesn't have anyone that understands the same kind of thing that he understands. So we both have been in local government, and we know what that looks like. We know how to pass a budget.
Got it. In terms of, so in terms of that, I mean, that's, I've heard this before, is it, you know, Ted, it's like he's isolated on city council in terms of what's, how it's been to make up in the past? So you're feeling you could get in, or to maybe have both sides of the story be heard in terms of everything being one-sided?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. I would, I would probably be more on the line of a, of a Nick Fish, bringing folks together, trying to unify the council so that we can see everybody's concerns. We can't be a city if we can't look at everybody's concerns, and, and that's just who I am and where I've been in my world.
And in the current situation within the city of Portland, are there particular bureaus you would push for in terms of, you know, are, is it?
Yeah.
I mean, I, part of it's.
I mean, if I can sit here and dream with you for a second, if you, if you don't mind that, I'd love to have the transportation department prosper Portland, the children's levee, and really, the fire department, it looks kind of, you know, exciting to do, but I would certainly want to have the parks. So if I had my, if I could, you know, wave my magic wand, it would be transportation, prosper Portland, and the parks and the children's levee.
Gotcha, okay. And then talking, talking about kind of prosper Portland, and, you know, in terms of policies the city of Portland has put in place, the last, you know, we've had a relocation fee, we've now got, you know, with the eviction moratorium now is from the state level, we've got the, you know, the, the housing security deposits and things like that. It's, you know, the roadblocks are getting more and more significant for property owners in terms of trying to rent property in the city of Portland. We're seeing capital, you know, vacating out. I mean, how do you turn that around as one voice on city council when you've got, you know, four other voices, you know?
Do you remember when we had this big ADU kind of push, and the city of Portland stopped the system development charges for folks who were, who were going to put ADUs on their property? And so before that happened, the city of Portland work, that was Charlie Hales, worked with us to say, you know, they're only going to be charged for the new ADU. But when it actually came into effect, our Randy over at the county decided that this was an opportunity to get more money for homeless dollars. And so when folks came in for their ADU, and they know that they had an ADU on site, he redid their taxes for the entire property.
Yeah, he did a reassessment of everything.
Reassessment of the entire property. I said, no, 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 you can't do that. So I went up against the chair and our COO and wrote a letter to the Department of Revenue and said, I need you to give me a determination on this. I need you to tell me what you mean because DeShute County read it properly. And we had to, as a result of that letter that me and Charlie Hales wrote, they looked at that, they, they gave their, their assessment of what it was, and they said, no, we had to give back all that money. They could only assess the property that was new. Again, many seniors did that because they moved in the ADUs, they rented out their big houses because they were house-rich and cash-poor. But I'm not afraid to, to use my common sense. My mom said, you know, people just don't have common sense anymore. I mean, you know, my, my, my six-year-old granddaughter could recognize that you can only charge and assess folks for new property, not old property. And so things like that. So I'm, I'm willing to, to make people see that there's a different way to do it. We can't on the backside try to figure out how to pay for our social services on the backs of elderly residents in our community just because we think this is a good idea. It has to be based on some solid codes in our, in our code, and that was not in our code, and you can't do it. So I do know how to push back a bit when I see things that are irregular. And I was the one who started the inclusive fund with Charlie Hales, with some of our lottery dollars that we, we tried to identify operating capital for startup companies, for women and minority startups. And so I, I know what runs our city. For us, the more people that we can get off of our local roles of, of being a safety net government and get them working and having a prosperous business, we can have more and more money to do the things that we need to do to help the most vulnerable. And so that's what I want to do. I want to make sure that we have a voice of someone that is not afraid to, to institute policies and programs that are going to help our small businesses and, and our economy thrive, not just arrive, but to thrive.
And part of, kind of, some of the, on the business side, I mean, what do you see are some of the major barriers of, you know, affordable housing in Portland at this, at this time, and, you know, be some of your solutions?
That it's not affordable.
Trying to address that concern?
That the, the housing is not actually affordable. When we're, when, when it's costing us $400, $400,000 a door to build affordable housing, who is that affordable for?
Right.
I mean, we have to look at other ways in which to do it, and I know that there are, you know, some other restrictions around, you know, labor contracts and those kinds of things, but this is not being affordable. I would like to land bank. I would like to be able to put some more money to the side. We're spending $60 million a year, we split it between the county and the city, to put extra money in the homeless ecosystem, but I take half of that money in land bank. And we can, we can update old hotels, multiplexes quicker, and house our most vulnerable than we can build, building new affordable housing. Not that we shouldn't do that, we should be in the process of doing that because we have a lot of resources over in metro to do that kind of thing. But I think if we really want to move the bar, I suggested, I dropped a resolution to, are you familiar with the multi-program that the county and the city does? But that's only used for, it's only been used in the past for new developments.
Right, new construction, yep. It's been a very successful program.
Yeah, but if you look at the language, I had our city, our county attorney look at that, there's language in that, in there that says it can be used for existing multiplexes. And all you have to do is get the city and the county both to, to sign off on that. I would use the multi-program to upgrade existing multiplexes to deal with our affordable housing crisis and our homeless crisis. And now, since we have that, that bond that was passed that will give support services to, to people who are homeless in our, our city streets, we can match that up with the multi that we already have to be able to house people immediately, not four to six years from now, because we can't build our way out of this crisis. We just can't.
Right. And what do you see on the housing, I mean, there's a big, there's a push now for the infill, you know, changing the density. What's your thought on how do you balance the, you know, the need for more housing, additional density, the lack of, you know, restricting urban sprawl, and, and again, existing neighborhoods kind of fighting against that?
I know that, I know the existing neighborhoods are fighting against, I have a multiplex. My son wouldn't be able to, to, to be in the, in the housing that he is right now if, if we didn't have that. So I think everybody's going to have to take a haircut. We're all going to have to, to understand that we have to do infill. I mean, there's 40,000 people a year, at least for the last six years, have been moving to, to the city of Portland. There is a reason why they're moving here, because of the quality of life, the sustainability, our, our weather, it's, it's pretty much, it's, it's mild compared to other places. And you have access to government in a way that many have not had in, in, in many of our eastern and southern states. So we have a quality of life that is, what I would say, it's, it's attractive, and that's why people come here. We don't have taxes. That's another issue why we're in the bind that we are right now, we don't have a sales tax. And that is such a, a, a conversation that you don't even want to bring up in, in political circles because it's, it's been voted down every single time. But the, but the issue is, we need to use our existing policies like the multi and existing resources like we're using right now to get those unsheltered folks off the streets. Many of them have mental health and drug and alcohol problems, and we need to figure out how to get them into services quickly and move people to house them first.
So are you open to bringing different stakeholders in terms of housing policy? Because I know in talking to various owners and, and property owners in terms of the multifamily, almost feeling like they've been excluded from any of the, you know, to the table, the discussion in housing policy from, you know, from the.
Oh, yeah, I'm totally, I'm totally agreeable to that. I felt like that the multiplex owners were not involved in this latest thing that Commissioner Yu Daly did. She wrote a policy that didn't, she didn't talk to folks first. So I think you have to talk to all the stakeholders, and not just the ones that you, you want to serve, but, but everyone who's in the entire ecosystem.
Got it. And you're, and you're open to going back and looking at recalibrating and maybe changing some of these policies that have been through, okay? And I know from your history, you don't have any problem, like you said, you know, voicing your opinion and, you know, maybe going against what's the loudest voice in the room.
Right, right. And contrary to popular belief, I, you know, I try to be inclusive in, in conversations. I don't try to leave people out because I know what that looks like when, when we don't, we, we don't have a fair process and everybody's not happy and. Because I know what that looks like when, when we don't, we, we, we don't have a fair process and everybody's not happy and. And when you really wanna do something in the future, you can't bring those folks along because they're still teed off about something you did two years ago.
Right, no, that's true. So what other big change, I mean, looking at what happened the last, I mean, this year has been, you know, one we'll never forget and, you know, with everything that's happened from. You know, COVID to Black Lives Matter, just, you know, what, I mean, what would you have done differently if, you know, you had the direction of the city? You know, would have been, you know, you said, sit down and talk to these people ahead of time?
We, you know, we would have been having conversations about what a new public safety system looks like prior to, way prior to this. Uh, contract expiring and I think that's what kind of, you know, kicked everything off. The contract expired, the pandemic happened, the protesters started, you know, George Floyd happened. And it was just a perfect storm to have what we, what we see right now in our city streets. But it's no excuse for us to tear up our city. And I want my city back.
And so what do you say to the people that own businesses downtown or that live downtown that have, you know. This, that, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel, how do you address? I mean, they were having issues downtown ahead of. The time with, you know, homeless and things like that and now it's, you know, now it's a combination of things. I mean, what do we say to those people to get this concern I'm hearing and, and, you know, from investors saying, you know, how are we gonna get downtown back? Is it gonna come back? Is the city gone so far that now we're looking?
I think you're gonna be looking at it. I think you're gonna be looking at a totally new city council. Carmen Rubio, who's a friend of mine, I worked with her when I was at the county, we, um, identified resources for her as a part of a coalition. Of community-based organizations that were really concerned about, um. Kids who are in communities of color who were not graduating, we found some ways to expand those resources to help. I believe that, um, adding me to the, to the mix. With my experience and, and relationships and communities of color. Um, that I'll be a voice that people trust. And that they know that they can depend on, if I say something, I'm gonna do it. And they have a track record of working with me and I don't think that that is true of this city council right now.
And, I mean, just in terms of he ran against Joanne last. Do you, do you guys have a work, cause she's there for another thing, two years, do you guys have a working relationship? Get things done or?
As you know, that, um, Joanne is, is in the corner of my opponent and she also. Supported someone else in the primary and she lost and got fourth. Uh, Joanne's gonna be my new best friend, right? Whether she knows it or not, I'm gonna be sitting right next to her. And so she's not gonna have a choice, but to be someone who is, that I'm gonna work with again. I, I am really, uh, impressed with the fact that she took one of my points from the letter that I sent her and she's pushing it right now. And so I know she's, she's amenable to good policy. One thing that I know how to do is, I know how to write and pass good policy and I know how to count to three. I did that over a hundred times at Multnomah County. And if you look at my record and look at the record of the current city council to see how many times they counted to three. Whether they be in the, in the county commission or the, or the legislature, they don't have that kind of history. I may not have played my politics right, but I know how to, how to do good policy and how to talk to folks.
Well, I think, like you said, I think having a new city council is good. From what's happened in the past, as they said, I just don't, you know, it hasn't been effective and we, I think we're seeing what that brings about now, uh, in the city, so.
Mm-hmm.
And the concern too, as you said, is the lack of stakeholders being involved in the process. And things being almost predetermined, uh, uh, you know, to get whatever, you know, passing they wanna get passed, is it really addressing the concern or? Something that.
You know, what I've, what I've seen over, over the last eight years, even with other commissioners, um, people just throw some spaghetti on the wall and see if it sticks. And, you know, even before I would actually put something on the agenda, I would probably have conversations with stakeholders. Uh, way before I, you actually see it on our docket, but people were just putting stuff on the docket. And, and hoping that folks followed and it just made, you know, different community groups upset because they weren't, they weren't a part of it and business upset.
Right, right, so is there anything else you'd want out to the audience who's here to? Know why vote for you, like I said, most of these people here are owners of, uh, multifamily properties. Rough, rough, rough few years.
I know, it's, it's, it's been rough and I just wanna say to, to everybody that help is on the way. And, um. Having someone who, who understands business, having someone who has experience in, uh, government and who have relationships. Uh, I think we're gonna be able to get something done and, and who will have an experienced staff. Who knows how to do this, that's what's gonna be really important. Um, I've had a chance for this last 18 months, I've been doing this most of my adult life. To really sit back and analyze, I was not gonna jump into this at all, I wasn't, I'm, I'm doing fine. There was, there was no reason for me to, to, to go back into this, but I have two granddaughters. And I think that Portland is one of the most beautiful cities, when we're not all Torah. That I've seen around the country in my travels. And we have a park system, a library system to die for. And I think that we have, you know, a relatively low crime rate. And we have weather that people can live, work and play in. And so for me, I wanna make sure that they have an opportunity to live in a city that I grew up in. Where my grandparents moved here from Brooklyn, New York. And worked in the shipyards and my grandfather retired as a porter on the railroad. But he was able to buy a house here that we still have around the corner from my house that we've had for 60 years. And to send, um, his kids and his grandkids to, um, college, like me. I want them to grow up in this city and love it and enjoy it and be able to bring up their families in this city. And so, you know, I can't talk about what needs to happen, I have to be about it. And I have to get into the business of making sure that this happens, I can't sit on the sidelines anymore. And just hope that my letter that I send to, um, to the council or the text that I might send to the mayor to say, maybe you should try this. That that's not good enough, I have to get in it, I have to be a part of it. Um, and so for me, I, that's why I'm doing this, so that, uh. Everyone in every zip code has a chance to make it. And to, not just to survive, but to thrive in this city and this is what I want to have for my family and your family. So that we can, uh, be proud of a city like right now, I've been watching Portland on the nightly news for the last five nights and it's not been good.
No, honestly, not just local news, it's national too, so.
It's, it's national.
I have a question, I know, you know, I know within the City of Portland, especially in our, in our world and the, you know, the multifamily sector, uh. You know, there are certain groups that seem to have the ear of city council, uh, Portland Tenant United is one of them. I mean, how, how was, you know, how do you change when you've got a small, you know. That's kind of dominating some of the policy to the, to the extreme benefit of one versus the other, I mean, how do you combat kind of some of that that seems to be prevalent?
You bring, you, you, you bring the other folks to the table.
You're committed to do.
Yes.
Doing that as, as if you get in office then?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I wanna thank you for taking the time to do this, I think it's been, uh. Again, I think like I said, ballots go out tomorrow and they have three weeks to get them in.
And I don't know if you saw, I, I sent out a, um, and just if you're interested. We think that we have a campaign plan to win, we put out 90,000 mailers last week, Thursday or Friday, I don't know if you got one of those. But we've had two commercials out for the last six weeks that they're doing very well. We're gonna put out three other, um, mailers. We're doing hustle where we're contacting folks in their, um, their cell phones. And asking them for immediate response, we're getting out the vote, making sure that those folks who support me, that they're getting out. And I understand that there is, I haven't seen it, uh, there is a poll, uh, out that has me about seven points ahead. Uh, that's why my opponent probably hasn't released it. But we understand that in order for us to keep that lead. We're gonna, today is our last day to do matchable, uh, campaign donations. And, and, but we can still, you can still donate after today, but we, today is the last day. So I'm gonna be on the horn all day today, we're gonna do like a marathon until midnight. Uh, to see if we can get additional folks to, uh, uh, donate, they can't donate more than 250. But the first 50 is gonna be matched six to one by the city. And, um, I'm leading in the fundraising and we, we're doing what we're supposed to do. And I, I'm, I'm so pleased that now I have NARAL, I have the firefighters, I have Basic Rights Oregon, they're endorsing me. I have the Northwest Oregon Labor Council AFL-CIO. Um, the IBW, UFCW, I have all these folks that are on my side, Senator Wyden. Um, we have Jesse Jackson who came out and endorsed me and hopefully he'll be able to come out for my last rally. But we know that this is, this, this time right now where we're at, that I am built for this at this time. As a single mother who raised a black son in this community, I, I understand what that feels like and looks like and what the successes and the challenges are. And I also, as a small business owner and as a multiplex owner, I have different hats that I have to wear. That I, that I know that I need to bring all these different stakeholders to the table for us to be able to have. A just city and one that we all can be proud of. So I'm very proud of where we are in our campaign. I know that it's, it's gonna be a push for the next three weeks, it's three weeks to the day, today. And we need everybody who will support me and the kinds of things that I'm talking about to building back our city up. I need them to vote and I need them to donate, go to voteloretta smith dot com and you can donate.
All righty, we'll let you go as you can get back at it and, uh, thank you for taking the time to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Loretta.
Uh-huh, bye-bye, take care.
Our entire office specializes in multifamily real estate, making HFO the largest multifamily brokerage in the Pacific Northwest. Your success is our passion, build your legacy with HFO. Call 503-241-5541 or visit our website at H F O R E dot com for more information.